All right, we are going to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 6:00 PM. And our first order, we're going to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order now at 6:00 PM. Our first order of business is going to be public comments regarding closed session items. We do have two speakers. First speaker is Victor Hernandez.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Y yo vengo a hablar por mi hija Giselle. Y la verdad, les pido una disculpa por todo lo ocurrido, que no considero que no debe pasar. Y les pido que consideren, que se le puedan dar una segunda oportunidad a Giselle. Y no tengo más otra cosa que decir, la verdad. Lo siento por lo ocurrido.
Hello, my name is Victor Hernandez. Good evening to everybody. And I'm here to speak on the behalf of my daughter Giselle Hernandez. I am here to ask that you consider to give her a second chance. And I'm just very sorry for what happened, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hernandez. Our next speaker is Giselle Hernandez.
Hi. Okay, hi. I'm really sorry for like everything, and I just want a second chance because Del Dios is a really good school, and I really liked learning there. I'm getting therapy, and I just want Natalia's parents to take my apology because I'm really sorry for everything. And I just wanted the chance because I like that school a lot. I just want to go learn there.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we are going to move to closed session. Mr. Smith, I'm sure will explain to you what the process will be from here. Thank you all so much for coming. All right, well, it is 7:00 PM. We are going to reconvene this regular meeting of the Escondido Union School District Board of Education. And we are going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Amy Felipe from Conway. Anthony Pimentel, thank you.
May everyone please stand, remove your capsids, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Very well done, Anthony. Roll call. All members are present. We do have a report out of closed session.
In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee number 669639 by a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, does anybody have any changes or modifications to tonight's agenda? Do we have a motion for approval?
Move approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Ms. Gardner moves. Ms. Harper seconds. Please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to approval of the minutes of our March 6 meeting.
I'll second.
Mr. Houston moves. Ms. Harper seconds. Please vote. And motion passes 4 to 0 with one abstention. Moving on to... Motion passes 4 yays, 0 nays, 1 abstention. Moving on to item number 7, March 20, 2025 meeting.
I was here. I move.
Ms. Harper moves. Mr. Houston seconds. Please vote. Motion passes 4 to 0 with 1 abstention. And moving on to item D1, recognitions. Dr. Filia.
Yes, well, once again, we are very pleased to be celebrating our students from across the district with our SC awards, our Student Excellence Awards. So we're going to be starting with Conway Academy, and we have a highlight video to share.
Greetings. I'm Tina Meglich, honored to be the principal at Conway Academy of Expeditionary Learning, home of the Cougars, where we believe Epic is the way to be inside and outside of our classrooms. I'm excited to have you all see our learners in action.
The first thing you learn when visiting Conway Academy is that we are crew, not passengers.
This is basically the heart of everything here at Conway. It makes me feel like I'm a part of something that's really big, and it's like a big community and a family.
It's time to announce our scholar award winners.
Whether it's students leading the all-school assembly... Or conducting daily crew meetings...
Why is gratitude important in our lives?
In the EL curriculum, students are leaders of their own learning.
Great, we're going to go ahead and share our thinking.
Class lessons called grapples allow students to take ownership of what they learn.
Four goes into four and 200.
They can think critically about a problem. They can share their strategies. They can build on each other's learning. And they can share that learning in a respectful and common way.
This PE class not only gets the wiggles out... It helps build a sense of crew community. Special education students join the TK class for some exercise and a whole lot of fun.
They love being a part of this community, and they feel like they are part of this community because everybody's included.
This is Epic Mountain.
Excellence, perseverance, integrity, and compassion. Kindergarteners learn the foundational traits we teach at Conway by climbing the Epic Mountain.
I can be nice to everybody. I can be a good listener on my eyes and ears.
When students reach the top...
You were ready to first grade.
And beyond.
So it goes from the lungs to the left atrium.
This teacher is a big believer in hands-on science.
I did cut in the right place.
Perfect.
A heart dissection will no doubt be a memorable moment for these young scientists.
I want them to leave my room thinking that they can pursue a career in science, and it's something that is really meaningful to them.
In art class, every grade level completes a self-portrait project.
This slide is when you're helping yourself to be happy.
It's just one way students document their epic journey at Conway.
They're very reflective.
In order to be a leader of my own learning, I have created a learner profile.
Conway students of all ages present self-evaluations with confidence and clarity.
My strengths and attributes are helping others in math.
These students are part of the Beautiful Spaces Crew. They're putting the finishing touches on a mural displaying Conway's 10 design principles.
The point of Beautiful Spaces Crew is to make sure that our campus is a beautiful place to learn and encourage others to learn.
Be the change you wish to see in the world by Gandhi. What this means to us is that we are the future, and that means we have to make the change now.
Class expeditions are projects that make the world a better place.
We collaborated with the first graders and the Dixon Lake Park Rangers to create this tiny forest.
This rewilding project on campus is helping beautify the school and combat global warming.
It's about having a respectful connection with the earth and being steward of it.
I know, like, these are the students that will be changemakers of our society, and I'm very hopeful that we're moving in a really good direction.
All right, and we'll go ahead and have Principal Meglich share more about her students.
Thank you. Good evening, President Paulson, members of the board, Dr. Barra, Cabinet members, teachers that are here, and especially our families and our students. I'm Tina Meglich, very proud and grateful to be the principal of Conway Academy. Thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize some remarkable learners this evening. These learners embody the spirit of excellence in all that they do. They have a strong commitment to getting smart, to do good in the world, as we saw in the video, a core belief for our learners at Conway. It is with great joy to recognize these three remarkable students that embody that spirit of excellence. So I would like to invite all three students up to stand beside me. 5th grade Anthony Pimentel, 6th grade Amy Felipe, and 6th grade student Juan Avila Flores. We're going to begin with our 5th grade student Anthony Pimentel. Anthony embodies the epic spirit at Conway Academy. He strives for excellence every day through his hard work, positive attitude, and consistent effort to accomplish all challenges set before him. It is remarkable to witness his drive for learning and application of new knowledge. As an active citizen, Anthony is understanding, kind, and a great partner to collaborate with. He serves his school. On the ambassador crew and celebration crew, that's why it was so easy for him to lead the pledge. It is wonderful to see his confidence, passion, and personality shine in these areas. As he shares about our school to visitors and leads our students through an assembly weekly, he brings energy and encouragement to all facets of learning while positively impacting anyone who knows him. Anthony is truly an inspiration. He's the epitome of a leader of his own learning and et. And for our Conway crew, we are so blessed to have his joyful spirit shine and inspire us all. He also does a pretty awesome Michael Jackson dance and moonwalk. Let's give it up for Anthony. The next student that we're going to recognize is Juan Avila. Juan is an academically excellent student who excels in his studies while maintaining a strong commitment to his school community. Beyond his impressive academic achievements, Juan is known for his deep compassion and genuine care for others, always offering support and encouragement to his classmates. Okay, I'll say it again. Just kidding. As an active member of the student government, Juan works diligently to advocate for his peers and contribute to meaningful initiatives that enhance school life. Juan's leadership extends to his role as a regular voice of the school delivering morning announcements with clarity and enthusiasm, ensuring that each day begins on a positive note. Additionally, he frequently speaks at weekly celebration using his eloquence and warmth to celebrate the accomplishments of students and staff alike. With his blend of academic excellence, empathy, and leadership, Juan serves as an inspiring role model for our entire school community. I am confident that Juan will continue to exemplify excellence here at EUSD and beyond. We are all very proud of you, Juan Avila. You are an epic Conway Cougar. And our last recipient here is Amy Felipe. Amy Felipe is an academically excellent student known for her perseverance and intelligence who consistently achieves top grades across a variety of subjects. Her passion for learning is evident not only in the classroom but also in her willingness to support and collaborate with her peers. Beyond her academic achievements, Amy is a talented public speaker captivating audiences with her confident presence, clear articulation, and persuasive delivery. Amy recently showcased her oratory skills at Conway's Got Talent Show by giving a moving talk entitled "Overcoming the Fear of What Others Think of You." This skill also serves her well as a school ambassador where she presents to visitors educational leaders from all over the country and world now. With a natural ability to engage and inspire others, Amy provides insightful information about school programs, shares personal experiences, and answers with professionalism, poise, and warmth. She is a deep thinker who offers wisdom and insight beyond her years and recognizes her gifts and talents are to be utilized to make the world a better place. Her commitment to Conway's epic norms is unrivaled, and she does it with grace and humility. She is truly a role model for our Conway community and beyond. Congratulations, Amy.
All righty, and next, we want to go ahead and highlight FAR Elementary, and they have a video as well.
FAR Avenue Elementary. I'm your... Hello and welcome to FAR Avenue Elementary. I'm your proud principal, Ms. Santiago. We're a PBIS Platinum School because our students follow our sore expectations. They stay safe, own our school, act responsibly, and most importantly, respect everyone. We're excited to show you more about our school. Let's go.
At FAR Avenue Elementary, our motto is, "If you miss school, you miss out." We offer three unique programs: dual language, English-only, and special day classes. But our first priority is safety. And every morning, our dedicated safety patrol gets the job done. At FAR, our instructional focus is writing. And in the dual language program... Students begin with a 90% Spanish emphasis.
They're all learning to read, write, and do math in Spanish.
This kindergarten class is learning about bees, or abejas, and can already share their knowledge.
Their language has come along exponentially in the matter of one year. They are going to be bilingual by the time they leave FAR Elementary.
These TK kiddos are learning about ants, las hormigas. A quick trip outside the classroom with magnifying glasses offers a world of discovery and observation.
I just want them to have a love of learning. In TK, we really just focus on play and learning their world.
Give me a thumbs up if you're ready.
These 2nd graders are bringing science fiction stories to life. They've been reading the Wild Robot series and are using their imaginations and some teamwork to create scenes with Legos.
They've learned a lot of lessons within the books about environmentalism, about technology, how we can help each other and work together.
Where does food come from? Kids in our garden club know they can grow their own.
Not only our food, but medicinal plants, flowers, a holistic approach to gardening.
It also teaches them...
To take care of the environment, to take care of other people, and to also share equity.
FAR Falcons are rewarded for good behavior. They earn Falcon feathers by meeting sore expectations.
Would you like to buy one of these?
And at the sore store, staffed by student leaders, kids use those tickets to buy things they really like.
You can buy one of these. You can buy one of these.
It promotes positive behavior. It promotes responsibility.
We've been doing Buddies a long time, for a few years now.
The Big and Little Buddies program pairs special needs students who can support each other in learning positive behaviors, like the importance of keeping the campus clean and owning the school.
Every year grows a little bit more, and I see more benefit from it every time, every year we do it.
Project-based learning teaches problem-solving and teamwork.
They have to agree on an idea and then work through that idea.
And it's fun, especially when the project is designing and building games. When they're finished, these 5th graders will invite the kindergarten class to learn how to play their games with prizes.
They're being taught to problem-solve. Today, those kids who can problem-solve and those people who can problem-solve are the people who are going to do well in our communities.
FAR Avenue Elementary, where young scholars learn to soar, and the sky's the limit.
And next, Principal Santiago will introduce her students.
Muy bien, muy buenas noches a todos. Me da mucho gusto estar aquí con ustedes. So hello and good evening. I'm really excited to be here this evening. I'm Mrs. Santiago, the proud principal of FAR. First and foremost, I want to thank Dr. Barra, President Paulson, thank you, the Cabinet, and of course, our board members as well. Shout out, quick shout out for Leonard. That was good. The playlist was good today. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity and time to recognize our amazing Falcons. I do want to also thank our dedicated staff and families who are here tonight. We have Ms. Ramirez, and we also have Mr. Sandoval. If our parents and our staff could stand, we're here this evening, if we could take a quick stand. I also want to thank, if we're watching at home, to our FAR family for all their support and for helping us move the dial. I appreciate our exceptional staff. And finally, I'm really excited to announce our amazing 5th graders today. So if I can call up Eric Estada from Ms. Ramirez's class, Isaiah Sandoval from Mr. Sandoval's class, and from Dr. Yo's class, we have Colin Clark. All right, we're going to get started. We have, first person we have here is Eric Estada. Eric consistently demonstrates outstanding character, his kindness, integrity, and leadership in the classroom. His academic achievements reflect his dedication and strong work ethic, earning him top marks across all subjects. Beyond academics, Eric showcases his unique talents through active participation in after-school programs like soccer and safety patrol, making meaningful impact both within, excuse me, both inside and outside USD. His unwavering commitment to excellence and positive influence on others make him a truly deserving recipient of this honor. And I'm going to add tomorrow, because he has amazing attendance, and we believe at FAR, if you miss school, you miss out. He's giving the principal, AKA me, pie to the face tomorrow. All right, so, all right, Eric, let's give him a round of applause. He's, he is practicing, I know. He was, I was the first one on his list, so. Ojito, ojito. All right, the next one on my list, I have Isaiah Sandoval. Isaiah's passion for learning, commitment to excellence, kindness, and selflessness. In assisting his classmates academically have made him an exemplary student at FAR. Additionally, Isaiah actively participates in a variety of extracurricular activities, including the school newscast and STEM team. Outside of school, he has a red belt in taekwondo and plays the violin in his free time. For these reasons, I am proud to honor and present this award to Isaiah. Let's give him a round of applause. All right, and next, I have Colin Clark. Colin is a positive role model both in the classroom and on the playground. He's an outstanding scholar and athlete who cares deeply about his learning and his peers. Colin consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic, dedication, and kindness towards others. He is also willing to lend a helping hand to classmates and is dependable team player in all his activities. Colin is also a sore leader, the quarterback of Pop Warner Football Team, participates in the Escondido Wolf Pack, and a good friend to many at FAR. I would say not to many, but really to most. Colin is committed to making a positive impact both at school and in his community. His humility and enthusiasm inspires others to strive for excellence. Let's give him a round of applause.
And next, we'd like to highlight Miller Elementary with their video.
Hello and welcome. My name is Kaitlin Sylvester. Hello and welcome. My name is Kaitlin Sylvester, and I am the proud principal of Miller Elementary School, home of the Mustangs. Here at Miller, we are kind, engaged, and enriched each and every day. Join us and see for yourself what makes Miller a special place.
At Miller Elementary, our vision is to unleash the brilliance and goodness in all students. We strive to create a culture of kindness where everyone feels seen, valued, and supported.
We have a lot of positive words. Be happy, show kindness.
Students work collaboratively across grade levels. Here, 4th graders team up with their kindergarten buddies.
It gives them just some sense of responsibility and being a role model.
At Miller, everyone knows what it means to be a bucket filler.
To be a bucket filler just means that you say kind and positive things to one another. We even remind students that just a smile each and every day to somebody can really fill someone's bucket.
All right, who's first?
In Miller classrooms, students are developing their reading skills by engaging in a variety of strategies that support all learners.
It's super important for them to learn to be independent and collaborate with each other. It gives me a time to work with a small group to give them that one-on-one support that they need.
Every grade looks forward to their weekly library visit. It's a magical place where kids cultivate a love for books. A comprehensive education at Miller Elementary goes beyond academics. We lead the way in encouraging healthy habits for the mind and body. The Miller Mustangs experience fun physical fitness activities two days a week with a fully-credentialed PE teacher. Our nutrition team makes sure that every child has access to healthy and delicious food by offering breakfast and lunch on campus every day at no cost. Learning doesn't stop at the end of the school day. Students at Miller are offered extensive enrichment programs like Garden Club.
This is a program where everybody can be a star athlete.
Taking Lego building to a whole new level.
Learning how to code robots to do autonomous missions on a mat or playing field. It's a lot of fun, and it's a great way to get kids involved in STEM learning.
The Random Acts of Kindness Club takes the Mustang culture of kindness to heart with community service activities all year.
We've done activities such as canned food drives. We've done sock drives during the month of October, which is conveniently called Socktober.
Working together, this team of educators nurtures confident and caring students who make a positive impact in their community and contribute to making the world a better place.
And Principal Sylvester will introduce her students.
Good evening, Board President, our school board, Dr. Barra. Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. My name is Kaitlyn Sylvester, and I am the principal of Miller Elementary School. Thank you for your time and invitation to recognize Miller Elementary as one of the many great schools in EUSD. I'd like to extend an invite, or I'd like to extend my appreciation to my teachers and Mustang families in attendance this evening on behalf of students being recognized. Please stay seated, but wave to be recognized. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our three student champions to join me at the podium. Lila Jade, Destiny, and Gigi. Great job, girls. We rehearsed, so we should be good. In kindergarten, our empowered learner, Lila Jade Drake, demonstrates student excellence by thinking deeply about ideas, asking great questions, and making connections between what she knows and what she is learning. She shares her thoughts clearly and confidently, adjusting how she communicates depending on who she's talking to. She also listens well and adds meaningful points to conversations, helping make group discussions stronger. She demonstrates true empowerment at Miller Elementary. Congratulations, Lila Jade. In 1st grade, our empathetic learner, Destiny Ordunyo, is a bright and hard-working 1st grader who is receiving a Student Excellence Award for her outstanding achievements. Her dedication, kindness, and enthusiasm shine in everything she does, making her a role model for her peers and a joy to have both in and out of the classroom at Miller. We are so proud of her achievement and can't wait to see all the amazing things that she will accomplish. Congratulations, Destiny. And finally, in 2nd grade, Gigi Godinez is an excellent student and creative problem solver who consistently demonstrates curiosity, diligence, and a strong work ethic in all content areas. She actively participates in class, asks thoughtful questions, and seeks to understand concepts deeply rather than just memorize them. As a creative problem solver, Gigi values diverse perspectives, works well with her peers, and uses feedback to continuously grow and navigate the world around her. She is one of a kind. Congratulations, Gigi.
Alright, thank you all so much for coming. Congratulations to all the award winners. Parents, thank you so much for everything that you're doing to make sure that your students are successful. Teachers, administrators, thank you all so much for doing everything that you're doing to make sure that all of our Escondido students are successful in every way. We are going to take a six-minute break at this time, so parents, you can get home and back to your business, and teachers can get ready for classes tomorrow. Thank you all so much. Alright, we are going to restart. At this time, we are looking for any public comments. Do we have any cards? Seeing no public comments, we will open up our public hearing. Item E2, our Sunshine Negotiation Proposal from CSCE.
At this time, CSCE will wait to sunshine their articles at, to the May 8th Board Meeting.
Very good, moving on to item E3, AAA Sunshine Negotiation Proposal.
At this time, we ask AAA to come forward to provide the articles that they would like to sunshine.
Good evening. President Paulson, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. Thank you for allowing me this time. I'm here to inform you that we will be entering negotiations for our collective bargaining agreement in the near future, and our association is committed to engaging in the process in good faith with a focus on achieving fair and mutually beneficial outcomes for all parties involved. After careful consideration and consultation, the Escondido Elementary Educators Association identified the following articles of the CBA that will be part of our upcoming negotiations. They are, first, Article 11 Leaves; second, Article 9, which is currently a blank article; third, Article 12, Class Size; fourth, Article 13, Transfers; fifth, Article 16, Employee Benefits; sixth and last, Article 17, Salary. We believe these areas are key to improving our work conditions, compensation, and overall employee well-being. AAA's goal in these negotiations is to foster a collaborative environment and reach agreements that support the interests of both parties. We look forward to working together in a respectful and productive manner, and we will engage in this important process. Thank you for your attention and support as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Moving on, do we have a report from CSCE tonight? We did have a very good meeting with them at 5:00 PM tonight, and very productive. Moving on, AAA. Seeing no report, we have no further. All written communications have been distributed to all board members. Moving on to item F, Consent Items. Do we have any items that anybody would like to pull for separate consideration?
No, I just wish I had perfect attendance and could have attended the ultimate game truck at Oak Hill Elementary. That seemed like a great reward for being, having perfect attendance for the month. You jealous, though?
I am not, I am very jealous. Alright, so moving on to approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Olson moves. Mr. Houston seconds, please vote. Alright, motion passes 5-0. Moving on. To Business Services, an update to Resolution 2425-18, Emergency Waiver Rincon Roof Repair. How is that roof repair going?
Well, it's near complete. We'll be completing that here in the spring break period. Just some edge sealing that has to be done. And that will be done, like I said, during spring break.
Very good. Do we need to vote on this one?
No, this is just an information update that we have to give when we do an emergency declaration.
Alright, very good. Moving on. To Business Services, Resolution 2425-17, Mitigation Agreement, Annexation of Territory with KB Homes Coastal.
So, more familiarly known as a CFD or Community Facilities District. So this is another development. The developers asked to join our existing CFD to build 42 family residence, single-family residence down in the Miller area.
Very good, looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented. Second.
Mr. Houston moves. Mr. Olson seconds, please vote. And motion passes 3 to 2 with zero abstentions. Moving on to item 2, Resolution 2425-22, Gem Industrial.
This is a resolution brought before the board. We have done all the bidding and project, starting the project of installing our security cameras in the poles we put in the ground for that. In the process of doing so, we determined that we needed to move four of our camera poles so they have better locations for better visibility because of trees, or just in a better layout. Also, one of the four had to be moved because where we were gonna put it, we struck granite. And so it was easier for us to move it a few feet over instead of paying a lot more money to drill through the granite. This resolution, because we already did the bidding, is to allow us to contract with a separate company that we got quotes from all the companies, including the one that did the original work, to just do the extra trenching needed and to move those poles, to re-drill those holes. So this resolution would allow us to preclude us from doing the bidding to add this to an existing bidded project. If that makes sense.
I move approval. Second.
Ms. Harper moves. Ms. Gardner, seconds, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N3. Go ahead.
Okay, this is regarding Student Expulsion Case Number 2024-25-06, which is to accept the panel recommendation of full expulsion and placement at JCCS through November 14th, 2025. I'll second.
Mr. Olson moves. Mr. Houston, seconds, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on, item N4.
Regarding Student Expulsion Case Number 2024-25-07, Motion to Accept Panel Recommendation and Placement at JCCS through the completion of the first semester, the first high school semester.
I'll second.
Mr. Olson moves. Ms. Harper, seconds, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N5.
It's regarding Expulsion Case 2024-25-08. Accept Panel Recommendation of Stipulated Full Expulsion and Placement at JCCS Through the First High School Semester Starting New at the Second Semester of High School. Second.
Mr. Olson moves. Mr. Houston, seconds, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N6.
This is regarding Student Reinstatement Case 2023-24-19. Motion to Accept Panel Recommendation of Full Reinstatement at a Campus of the District's Choosing.
Second.
Mr. Olson moves. Ms. Gardner, seconds, please vote.
You erase this?
It's gonna pop back or it'll change?
I changed.
I haven't gotten mine yet. You can vote for mine. Yeah.
And motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N7.
Yes, we're asking to adopt this resolution, and this is related to the closure of Juniper Elementary on March 7th due to the flooding that occurred. This will allow for the ELOP after-school programs not to have any penalty.
Motion to adopt resolution.
I'll second.
Mr. Olson moves. Ms. Harper, seconds. Motion passes 5 to 0. Next, item N8 from Human Resources.
Yes, I'm looking for approval for the four reduced workload applications for the 25-26 school year.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Ms. Harper moves. Mr. Houston, seconds. And motion passes 5 to 0. Item N9.
Yes, I'm looking for you, the board, to accept agreements with CSCE related to negotiations, tentative agreement, the side letter establishing our teacher residency program, and a side letter clarifying the calculation and reporting of longevity pay for Calpers.
I'll move approval. Second.
Ms. Harper moves. Ms. Gardner, seconds, please vote. And motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N10.
Yes, I'm looking for the board to approve the three articles that we would like to sunshine. Work Hours Work Year, Article 10, Article 16, Evaluation, and Article 22, Peer Assistance and Review.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Olson moves. Ms. Harper, seconds, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N11.
Yes, I'm seeking approval to sunshine the articles with CSCE. It's Article 8, Salary; Article 9, Health and Welfare Benefits; and Article 10, Leaves of Absence. Leave of Absences.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Houston moves. Mr. Olson, seconds, please vote.
That's ours, that's our proposal. That's what we're sunshine.
And motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N12.
Yes, I'm looking approval for an increase in 0.62% retroactive to July 1st for all certified management, classified management, and all other management groups.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Ms. Harper moves. Mr. Houston, seconds, please vote. And motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N13.
Lastly, I'd like to adopt a resolution for a reduction of one duty day beginning with the 25-26 school year for certificated and classified management only without a reduction in pay.
And just to clarify that, just aligns with the remainder of the settlements to those, to the, to the CSCE and AAA contracts?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Olson moves. Ms. Harper, seconds, please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Item N14, Information Systems and Technology.
Yes, it's lease-to-own agreement with Apple for 2,800 iPads and associated licensing needed for next school year. This will also replace older iPads in our inventory and right-size our inventory.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Houston moves. Mr. Houston moves. Ms. Olson, Mr. Houston moves. Ms. Harper, seconds. Mrs. Harper, seconds. Please vote. And motion passes 5 to 0. Item N15.
This is an amendment for our existing contract with Diligent, which is a platform for our board docs. They're switching platforms to a new version. This will be discontinued. So we're gonna be, we're asking to adopt a new platform. We will be getting training very soon.
I move approval.
Second.
Mrs. Harper moves. Mr. Houston, seconds. Please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Moving on to item N16.
So this is amendment to my existing contract that will call for a .62 salary increase effective July 1st, 2024. And it's consistent with the other bargaining groups.
I move approval.
Second.
Mrs. Harper moves. Mr. Houston, seconds. Please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. I am very disappointed to announce that we will not have a presentation about the budget tonight and so we are going to move on. Remorsefully, to Board Member and Board President Reports. Mrs. Gardner. Mr. Houston.
No report.
Mr. Olson.
Just one, one item. I was able to attend the District English Learner Advisory Committee meeting a couple weeks ago and had a very good presentation. There was quite a few of our community members present, so just want to thank those that came out. We had a very robust turnout as well as a robust conversation. Thank you for the presentations that were made and the authorization from that group to move forward with, with some action items from the staff. So it's good to be in attendance and again, thank you to all who participated in, in that committee.
I was able to attend two events to see two items from the Education Foundation Grants recipients in action. Because I don't know if I reported back that we went to the TK at LR Green and saw their art wall, which was fabulous and they were so well-trained. It was very impressive. Not only did they make the art, they cleaned up the art, so it was excellent. And then I was also able to go to Quantum and see their cricket setup. I was very jealous of it because my cricket's this big and their cricket was this big, so. They can do a lot of wonderful things, which they had displayed at the Smart Festival, which I also attended last Saturday, which is always fantastic. I hope we're able to move it into the big theater next year because I wasn't able to see any of, I didn't want to take any family spots for all the performances in the theater, but that, I mean, that was past standing room only. Good thing the fire marshal didn't come through. But excellent job. I know the teachers and the staff and the students put on, put in so much effort into that event every year. It was excellent. And it was nice that it was open the next day as well for anyone who wanted to see. And then I also attended the showcase at Hinton Valley. I brought my youngest daughter, who will be in 6th grade next year, which is I think who they kind of tailored it to, which really had a booth for every after-school activity, every elective. It was a great presentation of what they could expect if they were gonna attend to Hinton Valley last, next year. I thought it was a great idea. Everyone was so welcoming. Everyone was very engaging, especially to my daughter, but I mean, everyone else there, they were, they were talking to all these potential students. And I would love to see that at other district, at other schools because I think it, you know, there is that fear of going into middle school in our district and I think that really shows how warm and welcoming they can be and all the things that might interest them that might pull them over to one of our schools. And then I also went on a tour of the ELOP program at Reedy Creek. I wanted to thank Rick for setting that up and Kelly Stewicki, oh, sorry, I said her name wrong, for showing us around. It was fabulous to see all the great programs we have, all the students engaged. And how many are there? I mean, I think there was over 400 students, you said, participating in it weekly. Great opportunity for more enrichment and more intervention in how they tied those together. So that was great to see. And that was my full report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to point out, the Smart Festival was absolutely outstanding. Wonderful reviews coming out. Want to thank CSEA for meeting with the Board of Education this evening. Those communication meetings are always very valuable. Want to shout out to all CSEA members as well as all of our teachers and administrators. A huge thanks from everybody in the community for what they are doing to educate and support our students. So thank you all. Dr. Abara and Cabinet.
So just wanted to remind everyone that spring break will begin next week on Thursday and so don't forget, don't come to work on Thursday, just in case that was a problem. So just wanted to wish everyone a well-deserved spring break.
Yes, we just want to remind everyone, we have our STEM Challenge. Our annual event is this Saturday at Rincon and it's from 8:30 to 12:00. And all of our schools will be represented competing to see who brings home the awards.
Alright, well, thank you very much and Dr. Abara, thank you for the reminder of spring break. I know that nobody has been thinking about that, so I'm glad that you brought that up. The next regularly scheduled Board Meeting will be held on Thursday, May 8th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Escondido Union School District, Carolyn Gilbert Education Center, 2310 Alder Grove Avenue, 92029. And with that, we are adjourned.